David, can you hear me?
Yeah, this is me. I use the dial in.
Okay, I'm just on, you're unmuted, so you're good.
Okay.
Ed, everyone's here now.
Okay, thank you. Are we, are we recording?
Yep.
Welcome everybody to the January 20th, 2022 Howard County Planning Board meeting. Since this is a virtual meeting, if you're providing testimony, please speak clearly into your phone or computer microphone. If you're experiencing technical issues, you may send an email to planningboard@howardcountymd.gov, and that's monitored during this meeting. So I hear an approval for the past minutes, for the meeting of the, the minutes for the past meeting.
I move that the recording of the WebEx Virtual Meeting of the Howard County Planning Boards, December 2nd, 2021, be, meeting be adopted as the board's minutes.
Thank you, Phil. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. So our, the one item on our agenda for tonight is SDP-22-002 and Maple Lawn Farms, and the staff presentation will be by Derek Jones. Are you ready, Derek?
Yes. Good evening. I'm Derek Jones of the Department of Planning and Zoning. Tonight's subject item is SDP 22-002, Maple Lawn Farms, Business District Area 1, Parcel C26, Office Building Number 5. The property owner is MLFCC Parcel 5 LLC, and the developer is St. John's Properties. The request is for planning board approval of a three-story, 86,143 square foot office building and related site improvements in accordance with Section 127-0F of the zoning regulations and Subject 2, the preliminary development plan, Development Criteria of the Comprehensive Sketch Plan, Subdivision and Land Development Regulations, Howard County Design Manual, The Adequate Public Facility Ordinance, and the Landscape Manual. The subject site is known as Parcel C26 of the Maple Lawn Farms Business District. Business District is defined by Maple Lawn Boulevard, the principal roadway for the Maple Lawn community. The Business District is Maple Lawn's office community, defined by several multi-floor office buildings with some first-floor personal services, retail, and restaurant uses. Parcel C26 was created as a re-subdivision of previously recorded parcels C16 and C20, and is situated at the southwest corner of Maple Lawn Boulevard and Market Street. This is an area of the existing site conditions of Parcel C26, where the proposed office building and surface parking is to be constructed. The boundary of the parcels highlighted in yellow. As the aerial shows, the site is currently undeveloped. The yellow arrow in the upper-left corner points in a northerly direction to provide orientation. To the north is an existing row of residential townhomes in the West Side District. To the east is Maple Lawn Boulevard. To the south is an existing office building in the Maple Lawn Business District that addresses 8160 Maple Lawn Boulevard, and to the west is an existing row of residential townhomes in the West Side District. Again, this SDP proposes a three-story building on Parcel C26 with associated onsite parking, streetscape improvements, and landscaping. The, the design according to the traditional neighborhood concept elements has a office building sited close to Maple Lawn Boulevard to the front and urban streetscape. It shall promote pedestrian traffic within the Business District, and also a 529-square-foot pavilion complemented with a patio benches and landscape which should provide, shall be provided on the north side of the building. This is an illustrative site plan courtesy of St. John Properties and Greenbaum Enterprises. The proposed office building footprint is colored in tan, and shall be sited close to the Maple Lawn Boulevard. The closest to the Boulevard, again, will define an urban streetscape, thereby promoting pedestrian traffic within the Business District. Surface parking shall be provided at the rear of the building with landscape islands to help enhance the aesthetics of the property and provide shading. In addition, the office building, in addition to the office building, as I mentioned, there, there should be a pavilion complemented with a patio benches and landscaping provided on the north side of the site near, near the Market Street entrance. A perspective of the pavilion is shown in the bottom-left corner. The remainder of the site shall include perimeter and eternal sidewalks, pavers, perimeter and eternal landscaping, outdoor lighting, and a landscape dumpster enclosure. First floor of the building may possibly provide space for retail, personal services, and restaurant uses. This, this slide shows the parking calculations for the site. The proposed plan intends for the new building and the adjacent four office buildings to share parking. We wanted to point out the excess of parking identified on the SDP for further clarifying the feature charts. The parking required for the five buildings per the zoning regulations totals 1,097 spaces. Project is eligible to use the shared parking. Time of day adjustment calculations permitted under Section 133 OF1 of the zoning regulations. That calculation results in a total adjusted demand of 1,045 parking spaces needed for the building at their peak usage time. Proposed onsite parking exceeds this by providing 1,081 spaces. Forty-one available on-street spaces provided, providing further excess of available parking to meet the demands of these buildings. This is the development criteria per the Comp Sketch Plan. I will read these. Parts, the parcel, first is the parcel size. There's no minimum or maximum parcel size that apply. On the building height, on the proposed office buildings complies with requirements from RRL 216. The building is three stories and is measured at 55 feet in height. On permitted uses, development criteria permits office use, retail, personal services, and restaurant uses. There's no lot coverage requirement imposed in the employment land use area. This SDP brings the total floor area ratio for the employment land use areas in Maple Lawn to 34.8%, which complies with the 35% max. The proposed office building and parking area complies with the setbacks. Commercial structure should not be within 10 feet of the Maple Lawn Boulevard right away or 10 feet of any property line. Parking areas should not be within 15 feet of the Maple Lawn Boulevard right away nor within 10 feet to any property or boundary line. And the proposed SDP exceeds the total parking requirement. This is an architectural rendering of the building's exterior. As you can see, the building contains three floors, is sited close to Maple Lawn Boulevard, and includes an assortment of landscaping and a sidewalk along the perimeter. And finally, the planning board criteria. This plan complies with the planning board criteria stipulated under Section 127 OF2 of the zoning regulations.
Hello.
Consistent, consistent with the preliminary development plan, Comp Sketch, and Development Criteria, the site design for proposed buildings and associated site improvements is consistent with the PDP, CSP, and the development criteria. Satisfies the applicable requirements of Section 127 OE3. This SDP satisfies the requirement of Section 127 OE3 of the zoning regulations which describes planning board's approval decision of the Comp Sketch Plan and the development criteria. The planning board approved the amended Comp Sketch Plan and Development Criteria under Planning Board Case 378 by decision order dated January 25, 2007. Make effective use of landscaping to provide buffers where needed and to enhance site design. Developer proposes enhanced landscaping at or above what is mandated by the approved PDP, CSP, Howard County Landscape Manual, and the Maple Lawn Landscape Design Criteria. Developer has exceeded the requirement for landscaping for the site by including a mix of shade trees, ornamental shrubs, and ground-covered plantings as indic-, as indicated above. There are existing landscape plantings that buffer the existing residential townhomes to the north and west perimeter. These plans were previously provided by the master developer of Maple Lawn when those townhomes were constructed. Provide squares, plazas, or other usable landscape areas within apartment developments, office developments, or focal points. This SDP will provide a landscape plaza area at the north side of the site where office employees and visitors may gather for leisure activities. And lastly, implements the pedestrian circulation system for the IMXT use development. This SDP will accommodate pedestrian circulation, including sidewalks and crosswalks for the Business District. Sidewalk has been provided along the west side of the building. That concludes my presentation for Department of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Any direct, go ahead, Phil?
Yeah, I have a question. Of when, when, when you say possible first-floor retail, personal service, and restaurant uses, is it limited to that? I mean, for example, a lot of first-floor retail and is, doesn't seem to be as viable as people would hope. Are there other uses allowed for these first-floor spaces? Just curious.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. No, no, there aren't. Personal services, retail, restaurant.
Okay, you say it has to be that.
Those uses are permitted. It does not have to be, no.
Okay, it doesn't have to be. So another word to say was offices, for example. Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Not much.
Thanks. I don't see Erica or, but okay, if nobody has anything else.
I'm here.
No, you're just not on the screen, so if you're like raising your hand, I can't, I don't see you. So next we'll go with the petitioner's presentation.
Hi, good evening. My name is Karen Watzek. I am Vice President of Development with St. John Properties, and we have our team here tonight to present this, this plan to you. With our team online is Greenbaum Enterprises, the master developer of Maple Lawn. Mark Bennett is with us. GLW is here. Carl Gutshick is here to present the history and the context of the plan. Devin Leary from Human and Roadie, our landscape architect, is here to present the landscape architecture design, and Bryce Turner from BCT Architects is here to present the building design. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carl.
Evening, planning board. It's been GLW's pleasure to work on Maple Lawn since the beginning in 1996. So we have a very good idea of the history of the project and, and the context of how it all fits together. What you're looking at now is the, the vacant building pad and parking area that was always anticipated to be, to be added to finish out this portion of Business District. Bryce, do you have the larger aerial view?
I don't, Carl.
Okay, well go, please go back to the pad then.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you were to look up and down Maple Lawn Boulevard, what you would see is all the other buildings have now been either constructed or in the case of the building, immediately across Market Street from, from this site, it's under construction. What's been interesting is that it was all laid out going back into the early 2000s, 2003, 2004. This was all planned, and we've been gradually, you know, over the last, say, 17 years, been going through plan approvals for individual sites, but we knew exactly how it was going to turn out in, in the end because of the prior planning that was done. And I've heard it said that, you know, Maple Lawn is kind of like a, a jigsaw puzzle, and, and you see the puzzle pieces as they come in individually. I think that's a good description, and that's, that's where we are with, with this one. This, this pad was always meant to be primarily an office building. There are several different buildings that have been looked at over the years, but we landed on the one that has been described to you, the three-story building. I'll verify that it can be office on the first floor. It's just we have at, at the option of the possible tenants, we can do other uses on the first floor as well, which are driven by the needs of the, of the community. But if it had to be complete office, it could be. Since office parks at a little lower rate than the retail, personal service, and restaurants, if, if it works with the, all those variety of uses, then certainly it works with just being an office. Given our history, I'd like to verify what Derek has already said and that this site plan is completely within the prior approvals, the two PDPs, the two CSPs, the criteria, and the, and the planning board approval of that criteria. This is in every way in accordance with those prior approvals. So the first two criteria for approval of this SDP is that they are in accordance with those prior documents and approvals. So what you see on the screen now is the architect or the landscape rendering, which Devin from Human Roadie will lead you through.
Thank you, Carl. I'm Devin Leary with Human and Roadie. Derek Jones really did a nice job of running through this. So I'm just going to quickly go through the design elements.
Devin, it's hard to hear you.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. Is that better? How's that now?
Better.
Okay, let's talk really loud. So again, Derek Jones did a really nice job of running through the, the site design, but I'm just going to run quickly through a few of the, the key design elements. Keep this quick. As was noted before, we have to the north and to the west of us, the existing townhouses. There's really some, some foresight there because the, the plant and the buffer between the parking lots and the rear of those townhomes was installed when those were constructed. So now we have some, you know, some substantial canopy trees and also substantial hedge that's going to be retained. It's really nice to have that as existing, and it's going to stay. As you move to the east, that's where we have our, our pocket park element, and that's at the corner of Maple Lawn Boulevard and Market Street. And we think that provides a really nice transition to the, the West Side Residential District. There's going to be a small pavilion proposed there. There's going to be benches, some seat walls incorporated, and also some substantial plants. Also note that we have a crossing across Maple Lawn Boulevard at that point, and that provides a nice, clear access to the, the park, the larger park, which is across the street from our, from our project site. You can see the, the existing pavilion and the trail system connector. As you move south along Maple, Maple Lawn Boulevard, we have about six feet of fall from the north corner of the building to the south corner of the building. So we have incorporated a, a series of retaining walls and stairways, and essentially created a, a lower and upper terrace effect. And so we have some, some bench seating on the upper terrace. And as you move to the south corner of the building, we're actually at grade. So that's, that's where our EDA access is. South side of the building, we have another patio area. We'll have a retaining wall, a little retaining wall, kind of enclosing the patio area. Thank you. And that'll also have an overhead pergola structure. Really nice to kind of, you know, create that, that enclosure. And then lastly, on, you know, the west side of, of the building, we also have the, the main entry from the, from the parking lot area. Again, it's a substantial entrance, entrance with some, some planters. We're also going to have some seating for, you know, if you're waiting for a ride, you know. So that kind of marks that main entrance. So that, that kind of wraps up my part of this. I just wanted to quickly run through, and Carl kind of noted the, the planning board criteria and, and, you know, the five different, you know, guidelines. And one and two are simply that we're, you know, we're in compliance with the, you know, with the overall development criteria, which, which we are. We follow the Maple Lawn's. Criteria three is that we make, you know, effective use of landscaping and provide buffers. As you can see, we, we definitely meet that requirement. Criteria four is that we have usable landscape areas. And again, we have the pocket park proposed on the north side of the building. We also have the activated streetscape along our building frontage, patio to the south. So we feel we meet that criteria as well. And then lastly, that we implement pedestrian circulations. Obviously, we have the main walk along Maple Lawn Boulevard. We have walks around the building, so you can circulate around the building. And we also have a pathway system through the pocket park, which really provides a nice connection, again, to that West Side Residential District. So, you know, we think that we've, we've clearly met these five criteria. So that wraps up my part of the presentation. I'm going to pass the baton to Bryce Turner now. Bryce, it's all yours.
Great. Thanks, Devin. We are excited about this, filling in some of the missing teeth here at Maple Lawn. You know, it is a jigsaw puzzle, as Carl mentioned, and it's exciting to see these pieces fill in. The strength of the master plan, I think, is starting to really reveal itself as we have these buildings with front doors on Maple Lawn Boulevard, which really makes it a much stronger pedestrian experience, of course. And as we get retail there, and we get offices here, and the residential component, I think it's, it's very strong indeed. So with office building number five, this is the, the design that we have proposed, and it is three stories, as was mentioned. The footprint of the building is, is about 28,000 square feet, a little more. And therefore, the overall building is, what, 86,000, 83,000, about 143 square feet. So it ends up being a relatively large floor plate, not as tall as some buildings at Maple Lawn. So we've really chosen, from a design perspective, to try to accentuate the verticals to some extent here, obviously. And we're trying to leverage the materiality of the building by creating almost a shadow box, if you will, around the windows there that allow us to create a little more depth to the facade, which I think is helpful. The facade does have some variation in terms of the materials. The brick is most proud material, and then followed by this metal L shape that wraps around the windows, and then the glass and metal windows themselves. The building is really grounded. We think nicely by the dark brick that we're using on the ground level. And then that kind of carries through to the mechanical screen at the top, which is a darker metal. And we think some of these darker colors really do help to ground the building. So it's decidedly modern, but it's using the same palette of materials as the other buildings here along Maple Lawn Boulevard. And we're excited about the fact that we do have some space for some outdoor seating as an amenity to the building. Obviously, there could be some retail space there, but no matter what, we certainly want that character. Further, it was very important to us in designing this building that we maximize some of the outdoor space. And certainly at Maple Lawn, we have a lot of that. We have a lot of greenery, as you can see, and the terracing helps to present that landscaping. But we also made a very, a relatively large balcony on levels two and three so people can get outside. And these balconies will be connected to the elevator core. So they're not just off of someone's office, but they'll actually be more connected to the circulation of the interior of the building. So we hope that's just one more way to get people outside. Certainly a trend we're seeing now in the pandemic world. So we think that this will be a, a nice addition to the street for Maple Lawn Boulevard. Looking at the building from the other direction, it's really is a little bit lower. As Devin said, you can see how it drops off a bit on this side, but the building has a lot of presence with about a 17-foot floor-to-floor for the lowest level, and then about 11 feet, eight inches for each of the two floors above. So the materials, of course, are brick, dark metal, glass. And we do have some wood grain materials that we're using on some of these end elevations as well. That's come along more recently. So it's got a very warm and textured presence, we think. So we're, we're certainly very excited about how it fits in with the overall master plan and the continuation of the Maple Lawn experience. We're happy to go on more, of course. You know, architects love to talk. But we really do want to entertain any questions that you have. Karen, I don't know if we have anything else we need to present. At the moment, we do have some photographs of some of the other buildings in the, in the, in the neighborhood, if you'd like to see some of those, for instance. But at this point, we thought we'd open it up for any other questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. James, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you. That was very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica?
Good evening. Hi. Yes, just a couple of questions. Just curious, looking at the distance of the proposed building to the existing homes, as well as the distance from, of the pocket park to the existing homes.
Yeah, you mean, in terms of distances, the, the pocket park is really kind of separated from those townhouses by approximately a 30-foot wide road, sidewalks on either side. So then you get into some landscaping. The office building is approximately 60 feet, you know, from the closest corner of the, of the townhouses. And that's probably really the garage portion of the townhouse, of course.
Thank you. No other questions at this time.
Erica, Kevin?
Yes, very thorough presentation. Thank you. Can you tell me more about stormwater management, where it goes from that parking lot?
They'll be glad to cover that. There's a very significant pond that was, that was built across Maple Lawn Boulevard. And if you go down into the open space, there's a, I have enough of the sticks in my mind, it was an 18-acre open space that was created with the very first development of the, the Business District. And the, the, this large pond sits in that, in that open space lot. The drainage is all collected and treated in that location. And then just as a review, even though this, this Maple Lawn could have gone forward with the 90s-style stormwater management, the controlling the two and the 10-year storms, Maple Lawn actually volunteered to be a guinea pig for the brand-new stormwater regs that hadn't even been put in place yet. The county blessed the idea of Maple Lawn being that, that guinea pig. This was developed with really future stormwater management requirements that became current several years later. Point being, you know, Maple Lawn has excellent stormwater controls. And this particular site all drains to that one pond that was built. And this particular site all drains to that one pond that was built back around 2002.
Excellent. So there's been no overages or overflows, nothing affecting neighbors to the south?
No, there haven't been. The outlet of this pond that I was describing on the east side of Maple Lawn Boulevard actually goes towards the north and goes to a defined stream channel that joins Hammond Branch, maybe half a mile downstream from the pond. And then Hammond Branch goes under 29. So it's all properly planned stormwater that has a defined outlet. And I'm not aware of any nuisance problems that have been caused.
Excellent. Excellent. I was also going to ask, as far as cycling, do you have any plans to put amenities there for cyclists?
Yes, at the north end of the building, there's.
Go ahead.
Yes, at the north end of the building, we've provided bike posts. And we've, actually, a comment was made by the Office of Transportation. And the design that we provided at the north end of the building meets all of the current criteria that the Office of Transportation is looking for. So yes, provisions for bicyclists have been made.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's all I had.
And showers.
Thank you, Kevin.
Of course.
I'm sorry, I stepped on whoever was talking.
No, I was just going to add that, and we do have showers and changing facilities within the building for cyclists.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil?
Phil muted.
Here we go. Yeah, this question is for Bryce. I think one of the hallmarks of Maple Lawn is the continuity, I guess, of traditionally referenced architecture. I'm kind of curious. I like it, but I'm kind of curious as to what the motivation to go in a more contemporary way with this building? I mean, definitely Maple Lawn has some age on it now and things change. But just what was the motivation to kind of go in this direction?
Good question. I mean, there are other decidedly modern buildings at Maple Lawn. Certainly Building Eight, which we actually designed as well, is more of that character. And then you get, there are, however, some traditional components for some of the other buildings. It's true. But I think, you know, I think our buildings should be of their time and when they're built. And I think what matters more than some of the traditional detailing are the materials and the scale of openings and, you know, really the attitude about addressing the street and landscaping. And I think that's what really makes Maple Lawn Maple Lawn. And certainly, the retail buildings are decidedly modern buildings as well. So, you know, it's probably become a little bit more diverse over time. It's true. But we do have a few other buildings, you know, such as Building Eight, which is the top right building here. I think you get a lot of modern characteristics in some of the other buildings and precedents here as well. Even though you're right, Phil, that, you know, there are some cornices throughout here. But then again, you'll get other components, sometimes within the same building, some modern and traditional facade elements. So I thought it was the right thing to do, I guess.
Yep. Thank you.
Anything else, Phil? Nope. So just, do you have a picture of the rear of the building? Does it look just like the sides we're looking at now, or is it something different?
It does. It does not have the balcony, however, that you see on the front side. But it does have an indentation that echoes that.
But the metal glass front continues all the way across?
That's correct.
Okay, that's sufficient. If you can go to the picture, the overhead?
This one?
No, the one that's the actual photo. What my question is, is you're showing trees. So the buffer where the existing homes are, those look to be all evergreen trees? And that looks like you're also planting deciduous trees? Is that a correct interpretation of that drawing?
So I'll take that question. So the existing canopy trees are deciduous trees. They're red maple. And then what you're seeing in the aerial photograph is the evergreen hedge, which is below. So that's what you're picking up on. So there's, it's a frog vibram. It's an evergreen shrub. It's pretty substantial. It's probably about six foot in height. So that's what you're seeing. So you have the deciduous canopy above. That separates the parking lot from the rear alley of the townhomes.
So those red maples are not there now?
They are.
They are there?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you. Does anybody else have seconds?
Ed, I can add that those trees were planted early on to give them a head start so that when this building was built someday, they wouldn't be straight out of the nursery. So there's, those existing trees and shrubs have actually been there for, I can't keep it out of the way.
2008.
2008. I just got a number. So they've actually had a 14-year head start on getting some height on them so that they would be offering buffering right from the start.
Okay, thank you. If nobody has anything else, Lisa, do we have anybody present that signed up to testify?
We do not.
With that then, could I get a motion to go into work session?
I move to go into work session.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Phil, and seconded by Kevin. All in favor? Aye? Okay, we're now on work session. Somebody want to start, or do I just pick on people? I'll go with Kevin because he's front and center to me right now.
All right, great. The plan as presented shows elements that match the area, enhance the area. Truly seems that there's a lot of thought and planning put into this. Of course, there should be, but sometimes that's not always the case. And in this case, even the last statement that was made, oh, we put the trees in, you know, several years ago, just for this purpose, to make sure there was screening for these residents. That's a well-thought-out plan. So that's great. The pedestrian circulation is crucial for that area. It's a building that's going in between residents and existing downtown-type location. You absolutely must make sure that people are able to pass through this area without any hesitation restrictions. And they've addressed that. It's nice to see the green area, the terrace area, something where everyone can partake and participate, knowing about the additions that Phil mentioned, office, retail, personal services, restaurants. Those are permitted, but there can be other things used there. That's a great opportunity for us because we have been hearing some plans that have been somewhat hesitant in putting those type of items on the ground level. So it's good that there are other options. I like the idea that there are balconies that are accessible for everyone. Sometimes those are only off the executive offices, so that's a nice feature. Parking, that's the only thing that, it's not a concern, but just being in the area and sitting there, you know, trying to admire what's getting ready to happen. Just to think that there's that much open space or land that's getting ready to be converted into parking. I know that's not an issue or a concern, but definitely, hopefully, in the future, you know, as we turn away from cars, we'll be able to find other uses for the land. It's just a lot of land for parking, but I know it's part of our requirements. That's all I had, Mr. Coleman. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
Thank you. I was going to mention some of the things that Kevin already mentioned. And, you know, to my point earlier, the intentionality is really evident, but also really appreciated. You know, the forethought for the trees, getting a head start there. But also including showers for cyclists. You know, if you're going to promote cycling, to have that available to them once they get on site. Yeah, working in a recreation setting at the University of Maryland where people that cycle to work, that's one of the first things they'll ask, and it's a big deterrent if that's not there for them. So I really appreciate that. I like the design aesthetic. I like bringing things forward while still trying to, you know, keep the overall theme consistent. There's like the creative thoughts in the outdoor space. Really impressed with all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica?
Yes, I agree with Kevin and James in terms of just the plan being very well thought out and just really looking at the criteria that we have before us. I do feel that it meets all points in the criteria. So no concerns moving forward.
Thank you. Phil?
Yeah, well, I sound like a broken record at this point, but I have to agree with all of the above. I mean, that checks off the applicable requirements and goes beyond that. And I think that's been a hallmark in what we've seen in Maple Lawn. It's what should be there and a bit more. And then also the part of it's, a part of a plan, finishing up a plan that was put together years ago. It's impressive that it's been kept and on track all of this time. I even think that progressing the architectural aesthetic of Maple Lawn is also a welcome touch. I mean, I think it's an excellent project and it certainly satisfies our requirements and then some.
Thank you. And I agree. And it meets the requirement. So I have no other issues. With that, would somebody like to make a motion? We can either approve, deny, or approve with modifications.
I recommend that we approve this SDP as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin, seconded by James. Thank you. All in favor? Aye? Okay, I think that was everybody. Yep, it is. So that passes. So the thing, the next thing is, is we don't have anything scheduled for February 3rd. And so the next meeting would be on February 17th. Has anybody had experience with a hybrid meeting? Has anybody had a positive experience with a hybrid meeting? Let me phrase it that way.
I was going to say, we might be the wrong group to ask on that.
We had one hybrid, right? I guess.
We did, and we couldn't hear anything.
We tried.
Yeah, I hope we wouldn't want to repeat that experience. I'm not sure it works very well, quite frankly.
Just to mention, right now, the county isn't holding in-person meetings due to the spike in the surge in cases. And so that's kind of until the end of January and then to reevaluate in the beginning of February to see where we're at.
Okay.
And just to add on that, the only thing I've heard from council staff is that the sound has been fixed. But that's the only update to the system.
Okay, so, I mean, Lisa, you put it on the script. Do you want us to decide tonight if we're virtual or hybrid or?
You really can't until, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but they would need to decide by February 3rd when we post for February 17th, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, so we won't know anything until the end of this month. So it's just something for you guys to think about.
Okay. So maybe at the end of January, once you guys know, if you could send out any query to see if what people want to do at that time, and then we'll make the decision then. Okay, so that's what we'll do. With that, if nobody else has anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Kevin. All those in favor? Aye? Okay, we're adjourned. See you guys.